Well, we can start the meeting. It's exactly 2:30. And I want to thank my colleagues for being here. I want to thank everyone for coming. This is, to me, it's a very important topic. I came across it reading AARP. And the latest statistic that I saw was that 68% of the seniors in the country do some form of gambling, and it's on the rise. And you've got to look for telltale signs because somebody might have cognitive impairment. They may be going through trauma and stress, depression, loneliness. So that's what we want to talk about today. But don't get me wrong, I love MGM. I'm glad you're in our city. You've been great to this city, 1,000%. And any city would want you in their city. Because you're an attraction, you bring revenue in, and people have fun.
Very kind. Thank you, Councilor.
You're welcome. So maybe we can start with somebody to address the issue of senior compulsive gambling. Just gambling in general, but with how it pertains to the seniors. And where they can have some outreach if they have a problem. Thank you.
So Marlene, our CEO, is going to speak, but I see she's not on yet. So maybe I shall get started. I think one of the big concerns with seniors is not necessarily that they have a higher percentage of them have gambling problems, but the impact and the vulnerability. Because somebody who might be in a situation where they're older, they're on a fixed income, they can't get that second job to cover their bills, right? And then also that level of isolation. So I do believe it's a community that regardless of whether they have higher rates or higher prevalence of gambling, the impact can be so devastating in just a different kind of way. And so I think some of the things that we've done in the past is we've worked with Elder Affairs to train providers, kind of see telltale signs and understand what to look for and how to have conversations about it where it might not be a traditional screening, but questions to ask to start a conversation with folks to be able to identify if gambling is becoming a problem and an issue for them.
When someone who's on a fixed income, when they deplete their money gambling, then they have to make a choice between food, drugs, and continuing that gambling pattern. What happens? Where do they go? Well, how do we find them to help them?
Well, I think one of the things that I'll let somebody else speak. I think folks who are lucky enough to be seeing people in some kind of service capacity, if those providers can kind of get the clues of, wow, this person said they had trouble paying their light bill this month. Or it seems like when I go to their house, they don't really have food in their refrigerator. And then to start those conversations is really important.
So just by just normal conversations, you can try to gather more information. I think at Elder Affairs, what we probably can do to try to combat this issue is just to raise awareness more with our seniors. Just try to educate them. So we can have someone from your organization come to the senior centers and speak to our seniors would be a great idea as well.
So on that point, just over a year ago, MGM Resorts, myself, and then one of Odessa's colleagues, Amy, we put together a slide deck. It was dedicated to all visitors of casinos. It wasn't necessarily elders specifically, but we could change some literature to make it a little bit more skewed towards the elder community. And what we really wanted people to know, and then forgive me, I'm going to take a small tangent and I'll come back. September is actually Responsible Gaming Education Month. So we are right in the midst of, yes. And so we're working together right now, MGM Springfield and the Massachusetts Council for Gaming and Health, on trying to make people aware of the, A, resources that are available to them, but B, more than anything, just how to be an informed gambler. You know, the fact that, you know, we want you to come, we want you to have a good time, but that's all we want it to be. We don't want it to be anything more than you are here for entertainment, you enjoy, you can spend what you can afford to spend, and then go home happy that, okay, maybe you could have won a little bit more than you did, but you just had a good time while you were there. You got to interact with other people, you got to have fun time. You know, the environment itself was, you know, obviously thrilling and happy sort of thing. That's what we're trying to provide, and we do so actually in collaboration with the council quite frequently. And so throughout this month, in actual fact, starting next Monday from 12 to 2 p.m., we're actually going to have a press conference in our sportsbook area, you know, just speaking of this month and what it means to gambling in general. So in between-
What date?
Next Monday, the 15th.
Okay.
Between 12 and 2, there's going to be a little display where we talk about, you know, responsible gaming and its presence, especially right now in September. And then throughout the month, our GameSense advisors out of the GameSense Center at MGM will be on our gaming floor with a table, probably running either, you know, sort of surveys or raffles or drawings, but in so doing, methods of teaching people, you know, what to look out for, some of the myths and the pitfalls of gaming. You know, that you shouldn't chase losses, obviously. Just because you've hit a button 100 times doesn't mean on the 101st, next one's going to be a winner, as it were. You know, it's very simple stuff, but it's actually very meaningful. And people can't always see that because they think of some of the myths that come along with gambling that sort of self-efficacy themselves as time goes on. So it's a good time to be talking about this topic. And just to bring full circle to what you said about maybe, you know, partnering with the Mass Council, I would be happy to be part of that conversation as well. We did two events last year. One at the Jewish Community Center in Long Meadow, and then one at the Wilshireham YMCA, where again, similarly, we were providing these sort of presentations of just, you know, what people should be aware of, be ready for, and how they should sort of come prepared. One other thing I'll just point out that we have at MGM Springfield, and at least right now, only Massachusetts casinos have this piece of technology, is a program called Play My Way. And so what that is, is that if a person sits at a slot machine and they're a member of MGM Rewards, they put their card in the machine, they can sign up to this program and see it's a budgeting tool. And they can set themselves a daily, weekly, or monthly budget. The system itself is not active in the sense of, if I set myself $100 daily budget, it's not going to cut me off. It's not going to stop me. But what will happen is you'll get these reminders that pop up on the screen and say, by the way, you're approaching your budget for the day. You've hit your budget, you've gone past your budget. And then it's obviously on the person to make the decision as to whether or not they're choosing to stop there, if they feel they're good, or if they've got, you know, time to spend a little bit more. But it's one more tool that I've noticed, at least anecdotally speaking to players, speaking to GameSense advisors, you know, where the average person that sits at a slot machine and may do so for a few hours and doesn't realize, oh, wow, I've just spent $500 sort of thing. That even just the regular reminders will make them sit and take a moment and think, oh, wow, yeah, I really shouldn't have done that. Or, oh, good, I can stop here. I'm therefore comfortable. I'll go get a cup of coffee, I'll go get some food, or something like that, you know. And that's one of the other big sort of things that we're trying to tell people right now is take a break. You know, you don't have to come to us and just gamble, 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 gamble. Especially at MGM Springfield, you've got bowling, you've got the movie theater, you've got the top golf swing suites. Why not enjoy a little extra, something else to do as well, you know, not just gamble? So, and I'll stop there.
Can I just add one more thing that I forgot? And I apologize, I was preparing for Marlene to kind of carry it away. So I don't want anything to get left out. A couple other issues when it comes to the elder population is you see financial abuse. So family members with gambling problems accessing the money of the person. So it's not always the person itself, themselves who has the gambling problem, it's somebody in their radius who's saying, oh, I need the money for the operation. I need the, you know, whatever it is, and accessing that money. So that's another thing to watch out for. And recently, you know, our GameSense advisors are always aware of the regulars, especially the regulars that are older and, you know, have that kind of extra care and looking out for them. And one of the issues that comes up sometimes is the medication that is given for Parkinson's. And somebody who's never had a problem at all can develop a problem like almost overnight because the impulsivity that comes with that medication. And so sometimes families have to make a decision about whether the benefits of the medication are worth the other behaviors that are coming with it as a side effect, yeah.
Could you explain that a little more? How the medication for Parkinson's causes people to gamble?
Right, so it increases impulsivity. And so you see increases in, very often, in behaviors around sexual activities, sometimes shoplifting, and very often gambling.
Lowers inhibitions, I think.
Yes, and lowers inhibitions. And it's really, really been an issue for folks because there's these benefits and people have had to make some really tough decisions sometimes.
Interesting. Makes them more lucid, but at the same time frees them up in a way that normally sort of internally, your ego would prevent you from doing certain things.
Yeah, I'm not really sure. I just know that this is this one medication in particular that really has gotten noticed.
Are there warnings on that drug? Are there side effect warnings?
I don't know, probably. I'm not sure, but, you know. But I think, you know, sometimes families aren't warned about it, or people think, well, I'm not going to have that problem. Like, of course, you never think it's going to happen.
Cater, are you going to open it up to you?
Well, I think it's a great topic, and I think we're so timely doing it in September. And you hate to think that people would be preying on the elderly. You know, the family abuse is something, I think, it's a very tough topic. But I think one of the big issues for seniors, and Roy, you probably agree, is loneliness.
Right.
Loneliness. People are probably like to go places, go to some casinos because there are other people.
Because there are other factors going on. So I wonder, like, are they gambling because they're trying to make money? Or are they gambling because of, there's nothing else to do? And they're trying to fill that void?
Both of those sometimes can be a reason. You know, it's such a double-sided coin. One side is that, you know, I mean, people like the thrill of being able to go out to a place that has bells and whistles and a fun atmosphere and just, you know, enjoy an environment in that, you know, way. And at the same time, maybe the chance, the chance of coming back with a little bit more money than they set out with. But you're right as well, sometimes it can feel like it's the only thing that's available to them. You know, and it's not just casinos either. Of course, it comes in the forms of local lotteries, local, you know, raffles, and bingos, and all that sort of stuff as well, you know, so.
Maria?
Commissioner Cohen, could you give us like kind of an outline about what's to be done in the city? In any programs that you have to develop, please?
Thank you for asking. I'm very grateful that you asked. As you know, the city of Springfield does have a problem gambling coordinator. Her name is Teresa Glenn. It is our job to work with the community and try to do intervention and prevention as far as gambling is concerned. So let me go back to one of the questions that was asked. Where is there help? There is a 1-800 number that can be called, and there's also Gambler's Anonymous. Those are the two resources that I know about for individuals who are seeking help. Certainly, that individual can also call our office to be able to talk with Teresa Glenn or any of the other individuals. We currently have funding from the Gaming and Health Committee Commission as well as the Gaming Commission. So we're running two programs, and I will send this to you all because we just did celebrating the month. We just did community conversations about using a harm reduction model as far as problem gambling is concerned. So I do want, I think it's important to acknowledge that when the city knew that MGM was coming, the first thing we did was put in the budget an individual whose job it is to be able to be supportive. There are 202 retail lottery places, to your point. It's not just MGM. There are 202 retail lottery places in our city as of 2023. There are seven online sports books that can be accessed in our city. And of course MGM. But I say that because I'm going to read you something that an individual, well, I can say it. In one of our focus groups, she said, if I had taken the money I spent on scratch tickets, I could have a new car. If I look at how much money I spend going every day to buy a scratch ticket. So I think it's important to acknowledge that it's not just MGM. And I want to put a pin there because most of these convenience stores or lottery places are in our neighborhood.
And I said that at the beginning of the meeting.
And that's where many of our residents are going in order to be able to... One of the participants described it to me as hope. You know, you live on marginal income and you play the lottery, you go to the casino because you hope that you're going to win some funds to be able to sustain yourself and your family. So there is a socioeconomic place that, you know, we know as far as gambling is concerned. But I can just, I can, I have some data here, but it's not really not that important. I think what's important, I'm just going to read you what one of the individuals in our focus group says. He said gambling seems to be impacting more the lower socioeconomic status elderly population. We had a recent issue come up when one of the workgroups that I am a part of, some of the buses from the elderly housing in the area are delivering individuals to the casino and having them, and then having significant financial challenges later. So I'm talking, number one, about the convenience stores and others. But I'm also saying that there are buses that are taking our elderly to the casinos. So the question for us is, or at least for my department, is going to be the intersection of how we can do intervention and prevention on those buses. How do we have that conversation around the impact of your finances as far as the casino or the lottery is concerned? So I'm going to stop there and just say we do have an individual in our department whose job it is working with the young people, which is called the Gary Project, working with the elderly as well. And I will send you the PowerPoint. You can see what some of these individuals said, the voices, which were primarily elders and from lower socioeconomic status. They were mostly black, they were mostly Hispanic. And what they told us was really just eye-opening, at least for me. There was a woman there who said, I don't care what you do. What, I'm going to, I'm going to play my lottery. I mean, it's really a mindset many times. It's a learned behavior as well that we have to consider. But we do have some data, I do have some data, I do have some testimony.
Would you give that hotline number out again?
Sure.
And is that posted on the city's website?
Well, what I'm going to do, yes. We have a page on the city's website under Health and Human Services that has gambling, that has the gambling project there. So you can certainly take a look at that. You can take a look at the data that we have put up. But it's 1-800... You are so good, I think. Let me work.
50/50?
It says 1-800-HOT. If that hotline is H-O-T, it's 1-800-H-O-T-L-I-N-E, and then Gambler's Anonymous, so.
Well, yeah, so the number I gave is the Massachusetts number for assistance with problems. There is a national number called 1-800-GAMBLER, which you could call too, and it would then be rerouted to the Massachusetts number. But since the Massachusetts number is the immediate response, that's the better one to call, so.
What was that again?
So 1-800-327-5050.
So I had an elder that I have worked with, worked with the elder for a couple of years. And one of the issues when I see with the gambling is that we don't associate like the grandchildren, the family as substance of abuse and gambling. So for example, the grandson was preying on the first or the second of the month, waiting. One of the issues that I have with that in the community, and I don't want to identify certain community just overall, but it was there bright and early. Check, take grandma to the bank and cash the check with grandma. And guess what? He was gone. And that's happening, I've seen it around the community when come with the substance abuse and media family. And one of the issues was that he is supposed to be documented as the caretaker of the grandma. And I see that aspect growing and growing. And how do we make the connection with substance abuses and gambling as well? Because I find that sometimes we just discriminate that only the elders are the ones that are this continued behavior, but we don't go to the root cause of what causes that behavior. And I think those surveys, as part of the surveys that will be, you know, venue to look for those and bring awareness of it because it's a form of elder abuse. And we don't see it like that, but it is. And I learned a lot about that because the involvement that I had with the family. Eventually, he was in an institution for substance abuse. And then I was able to stabilize a grandma. But we see, we create the settings of gambling, but we've got to look at those root causes of gambling, not only the elder taking action, but the immediate family as well, is what I'm trying to bring to the table, and how we make that connection. That's all I have to say, and I need to recognize Counselor Davila. Thank you for being at the meeting today.
Thank you for having me.
Victor, do you want to ask a question?
No, I find it fascinating. Just a quick comment to say thank you for the work you guys are doing to ensure that our elderly are not abused in some, whichever form it may come, and to ensure that gambling is, doesn't continue to affect our elderly population. It's a big problem, and I am impressed with what I heard, and I thank you, guys.
Thank you, Victor.
And as I mentioned before, when the meeting started, we do bus trips, but we didn't have one of our groups wanting to go to the casino. And I nixed it because, you know, we're not taking any trips to the casino. So then they came back, oh, well, can we take a trip just down to Red Rose? No.
Too close.
Too close. So they were just trying to circumvent. We can go, you know, walk around.
On the bus, you know, there's a problem.
So, yeah, I think it's important. And the gambling addiction is not only just for, like you said before, not only adults, but it's a major issue. You can go to any of the convenience stores that she's mentioned, and people are just sitting there, you know, playing the kino or stack of lottery tickets, you know, at the counter. So, and then you see all these professional athletes with these prop bets. Now, these guys are already making millions of dollars, and they're doing prop bets for trying to give additional $1,000. So it makes you wonder, you know, is it, like I said before, is it for the money or is it just the high of it? You know, what can I do? But we're not going to promote Elder Affairs. And like I said, I think it would be good for us to do, educate our seniors and have someone come up to our seniors.
That's a great idea, so.
A meeting.
How do we, Helen, how do we coordinate that with maybe some kind of a meeting at the senior center?
Yeah, we certainly can make sure. I heard MGM volunteer as well. I certainly can make sure that out the individual from the city, Teresa, is there as well to do some education. I want to follow up, I think, briefly on what Counselor Perez said. Elder abuse is, and I, you know, really am concerned about some of what is happening to our elders by family members who are PCAs, who are really misusing and abusing, not physically sometimes, but by taking the money, by denying access to certain things. So I think that's a really concern of mine as well. So thank you for mentioning that, Counselor Perez. So what I would say is that we're happy to certainly go to any of the senior centers or anywhere in the city, not just senior centers, to be able to talk with elders about the challenges related to problem gambling. But I would also say to, I think it was someone's name, Roy, the youth. We saw, we see these multi-million dollar individuals on television. Because I actually love the commercial with, is his name Hart?
Kevin Hart.
Kevin Hart and LeBron James. Love it! You know, love it. I love their play back and forth. But I also think young people looking at this thinking, what is it? Draft, what is the name of the?
The Draft Kings.
Draft Kings. And I'm also looking at it thinking, there are young people who are following these athletes who you're saying to these young people, it's okay for you to... And so gambling doesn't start by being an elder. It is a socialized behavior that can start from childhood. Many of us remember, or at least I do, playing the numbers before gambling was legalized, right? Before we had lottery tickets, they would play the numbers. So sometimes we're socialized into gambling. So anyway, I'll leave it there. So happy to do an educational program.
Thank you, Helen. Cater?
Yeah, I want to follow up on what Commissioner Cohen just said about the elder abuse. How do you know it's happening? I mean, do people report it to you? Or how, you know, because I would think with Family Matters, god, grandmothers are not going to report to grandchildren. So how do you follow that?
I think the other thing that I've found, and Roy, you can please follow up, is that our elders have some fear. The fear of being alone, the fear of telling on their niece, nephew, cousin. Don't want them to be locked up, don't want them to be stigmatized as well. And so there's that piece for me as well. So how do you, you know, identify it? I think our senior centers, when someone doesn't have food or when someone really is in desperate straits, can't pay their rent. I mean, there are, for me, there are signs that I think Roy can probably speak more to around how we identify seniors in distress.
So sometimes like we do have seniors who contact our office or our outreach coordinator, they need help paying their water bill or electric bill. So when they dive deeper into it, they find out, oh, there is a family member there, a young adult who can work in this and that. So if they, I guess they can get more information, you know, the more and more conversations. You know, and they're talking to these seniors, older adults, and they get more information of what's going on in the household. How did it come to this? How did you get $1,000 behind on your water bill? Or $2,000 on the electric bill? And there's always, more cases than not, there's always another party living at the house. But then the senior doesn't have the money, but the other person is doing whatever they're doing.
Yep.
So.
So it's really kind of like a code of silence? I think so. I don't think elders want to get their family living separated.
Right, they don't want, yes, they don't want to have them involved or, you know, going, getting to the court systems or anything like that. And they just, they let it go. They stay silent.
Let me say that MGM has been a great partner, and I really want to acknowledge that. Been a great partner with our gambling program. It has been really just a wonderful relationship. The superintendent and I did a photo shoot at MGM. We are going to stand up a billboard at some point when I like, when I like how I look. But put it up as soon as I'm comfortable with that. But no, I wanted to say, because we went over and did the shoot at MGM, and very accommodating. But I wanted to just say that GameSense has really been a good partner with Teresa, so thank you.
You're welcome. Do you understand people?
Sorry.
Okay, so I learned of the meeting because of Nolan. I called Nolan and he told me there was a meeting here. My intent to help out... Um, my attempt uh to help out, last year we had a, we usually do community events related to different topics, last year we did the event related to information on problem gambling.
Yes.
Uh, so we were successful, we had twenty plus people on a Wednesday at the Hispanic American Library. My second attempt was to contact agencies, uh, the deal we're meant to help, also clinicians, a lot of people don't know the other side of my story, just because I'm focused on the library. Uh, I'm a personal person recovery, close to thirty eight years. Uh.
Congratulations.
Thank you, and when AA has been around since nineteen thirty five, and I'll keep it very simple. So there's like four hundred fifty meetings a week. We have forty two Narcotics Anonymous meetings a week. If you relate that to Spanish meetings, I'm actually the co-founder of the first Spanish Narcotics Anonymous meeting based on the fact that the language is very difficult uh for some of us. Um, Gambler Anonymous meetings are very difficult because they're not in Springfield, Chicago, or Hollywood. So for me to drive to Worcester or somewhere other distant location is pretty complicated. Um.
Why is that?
I don't, uh, they they have a there's, I think informational, uh, for instance, I got the information about this meeting today. Uh, and I think that when people get information related to, okay, we're gonna be doing specific event or a informational session. Uh, sometimes people gather to those particular informational sessions, I happen to be one of them. Uh, so I can learn and maybe uh try to figure out where I come in. Um, this year, uh, I already identified one agency, there's several agencies that have uh clinicians with a uh Mass P G S, Problem Gambling uh Certification. I just happened to be certifying that field also twenty years ago. Um, and a few other things that, uh, Batteries of Interventions, I've been doing that for a very long time. Um, and those specific agencies, I don't know if they're uh exposing that they're able to work with people that have gambling issues. Um, but there are agencies that I'm aware of that may have uh those therapists that are there. My interest really is in not only basic information to folks in the community, uh, so it's just not a typical library. Uh, we do a lot of informational uh sessions, and uh my thing is trying to work with the clinicians to have somebody that's very informative about the gambling field or anything related to gambling. And bring them to an agency specifically during their staff meeting. Uh, because then you have a bulk of people that may be interested in pursuing a uh certification in a gambling field. Uh, and I started that last year, I'm only one person trying to like uh get the information, working the best as possible, so, um, that was my input. Uh, but then if we had plenty of Gambler Anonymous meetings, which is very rare, uh, maybe a lot of folks like myself can learn how to avoid, you know, things like that.
Thank you so much. I just wanna say this, um, unless we have more to talk about. What everyone in this room is providing actually is a safety net to try to get as many people that we can, we can't get everyone, people are gonna fall through that net. But if we can build and expand that net, working together, uh, will be a much better off for it. And I wanna thank everyone for coming today. Um, I I was unaware that this is a Gambler's Anonymous month?
Oh, correct, so so it's responsible gaming education.
Okay, okay, I I I was unaware that when I put the meeting together, I didn't know that, but here we are. Thank you, thank you so much for driving from Acton, Mass. Uh, do you wanna say something in conclusion?
I'm I'm just thrilled to be here, and I think this, you know, the city of Springfield has such a robust, you know, public health framework and.
I'm sorry.
You're sorry?
I can't go any further, let me turn this thing off.
So I I just wanna say that the most important thing around the table is that we keep in mind, and I think that was very effective, because we have to connect people with the community resources.
Yeah.
I think I, throughout the years, I have taken that ch- or charge. So I'm not an expert in gambling, but I know there's a situation when it comes, how do we connect? And I thank Commissioner Colton for being here, and just over and over giving this information. Um, these meetings like that create a venue or connecting people uh with the resources in the community. Uh, because sometimes the elders, they, it's not that they don't want like this particular family, they don't wanna have their children arrested, but it's that they don't know what resources are there. And meetings like this, informational meeting like this, is what makes a difference in the community, and always connecting people with the community resources. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Like.
Yeah, I just wanna say, uh, with Elder Affairs, I guess, our biggest thing is just try to promote healthy alternatives, you know, besides gambling. So we are holding a open house, there's a little plug here. We are holding, um, holding uh open house at the Red and A Jordan Senior Center on Friday from nine to two. And we'll show different programs that's going on at the center, so if you know anyone, any older adults fifty five and over that may wanna come out and
I'll be there.
So.
Well, when I turn fifty five, I certainly.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.